We'll call this meeting in order. Stand recite.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. David and Skylar, if you want to have two seats there, that way we have the microphone for the audio. Purpose of this meeting is to address the issue of using the county blade for private purposes, basically. That's about the only way to describe it. So I guess we can probably just start off right away. Skylar, do you want to give a description of the situation? Or David, whoever wants to say?
Yeah, no, I'll go ahead and do it. Mr. Crumb wrote, ties on right on the county line of McIntosh and Emmons County. It's a lot closer to go to Mr. Crumb's house with the blade than it is back to Strasburg. Mr. Crumb asked if he could take the blade home and park it there, and that'd be fine. And I was like, yes. He asked then if he could use it to fix a little bit of a waterway and later his driveway. And since he's parked it at his house and it's a lot closer to do that, and being from other counties, kind of let that happen, I said that'd be fine. So we didn't try to hide anything. He asked, I said yes. So now seeing the error in my ways, I do apologize for any undue stress and stuff that has caused this. Commissioners, and I guess he's willing to pay for the use of the blade. We have no problem with that. And guess that don't know what else?
Okay, here, if I may speak. I don't want this to fall on Skylar. I'm taking the blame for it. I incorrectly assumed that there was a provision that if the county did private work, if it was approved by supervisor, it was okay so long as you tracked the hours and paid the going rate. If you look in the handbook, I believe it's on page fifteen, it gives you reasons for immediate dismissal. It says in there, "Use of county equipment unless approved by the supervisor." So I wrongly assumed that...I asked Skylar when we were on Eighth Avenue. He said, "Let me think about it a couple of days." We were back at Couch Crossing, which is close to McIntosh County line. I asked him again. He said, "Yeah," he said, "I don't foresee a big problem with it." I drove it home in broad daylight on a main road. I was not trying to hide anything. I assumed with Skylar's okay, we would be okay. In hindsight, yeah, it was probably the damn stupidest thing I ever did, considering the political environment in Emmons County right now. I did not realize that their, I'm gonna call them social media Nazis, are out there following us, videotaping us. It just, it was a dumb idea. I didn't necessarily talk Skylar into it, but if he had done more research, maybe contacted commissioners, and if there would have been known, I wouldn't have done it. I know other counties do allow it on certain occasions. Like I said, we weren't trying to hide anything. I didn't use it for anybody else, charge that money and keep the money. I kept track of the hours. If you would come and pick these sheets up, you can verify the hours. This picture I took is on Twenty-Fourth Avenue. I took that picture at five twenty-five, and then these are the hours. If you do the math, it's one point eight hours is what I used it. And then I did submit a check to Marcy, but she did not accept it. Skylar said the rates were two hundred dollars an hour to rent a grader. So one point eight hours is right at two hours. I gave her a check of four hundred dollars plus a hundred dollars worth of fuel that I put into it. I did not expect to use this machine for, you know, for free. And what I did, I built a two-hundred-yard waterway coming into my farm. I used a full-type high-grade grader to do all the work, but I couldn't get the back slope true enough. And I told Skylar upfront, I'd like to true up the back slope and just grade my driveway one time before winter, because the guy at McIntosh County is not very good at it. So that's what I did. Now here's what I'm willing to do. I am prepared to basically resign on the spot. I can give you a two-weeks notice. It's up to you, whatever disciplinary action you want.
Well, thanks for reminding us that, David, but we know that, so...
Know what?
We know what is responsible to do here, so you don't get to dictate the parameters of what's gonna happen here, so...
Well, I understand that.
But it's fine, but I just wanted to let you know, this decision's gonna get made up here, so...
Right, no, I understand, but like I say, I'm...
Right, well, thanks for your testimony. I mean, I think that's all the information we really need, so... Any input from the commissioners?
Well, I do, I got it. You know, the thing is, I mean, you have to battle it. I mean, if you would've did it on your own, I think, you know, but you have permission, but at the same token, it still isn't right. Because what we go through here, dealing with the public and everything else, people see what's going on out there. You literally open a can of worms up and wonder, "Well, we can't even go in and blade their road, or do this, or do that, but yet we're allowing county workers to take a blade home to do work on their land?" Rather than there's permission or not, that's just, that doesn't go in today's society. You know, everybody's out there watching what's going on and everything else, and I'm destroyed. You know, it puts us in such a bad situation, it's like, how do you deal with the public? How do you explain that? "Oh, we let the county work..." Now, what are we gonna do? Let every county worker take it home and do work on their land? I mean, that's, that's what we're up against now, you know? It just opens such a can of worms already. I don't know, I just, I got a hard time with it. I had so many calls about it, it's unreal.
Well, I can guarantee you it'll never happen again. Lesson well learned.
You know, when this came to me and I realized what was going on, I was like, "Really? I mean, we're in this political year, we're, we're doing our best on this board to try to maintain these fires, and you guys are throwing gas on it." I mean, and it all looks bad for us. The reflection comes back to us. It's like, "Really? I mean, you guys..." Now, I know Dave did this, I know Skylar gave the permission. You know, Skylar, that was kind of a mistake on your part, too, and I know you're admitting it, but man, if you'd only called everybody first and said, "What do you think of this?" We would've said, "Hell, no, we're not doing this." So you have to be blamed for this, too, in some respect. I mean, you can't, you can't wash your hands and say, "Yeah, Dave took a licking on this, but I got off clean, you didn't." This is, this is your fault, too.
I don't expect to be, I don't expect to get off where the buck stops with me. I made the decision, and I take full responsibility for saying yes to it, like, it is...
Because, you know, it even, it even gets right to the edge of theft of property. I mean, the day, the day work was over, and this thing is out there to work, and if that's the case, I mean, I served the county, too, and I got work I wanted done, too, then I guess I should tell one of the board or blade operators in the evening when you're done, run out to my place, because I'll be, you know, "We can't be doing this." It just, it just, it was a hammer blow to us, and it is not, and it's not gonna go good for either one of you, though. I mean, I'm just, I'm gonna be honest. It was a bad choice at a bad time.
What do you guys think?
Can I say something?
No.
German?
This is, this is a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing.
German? I'm willing to step out while you guys hash this out.
No, I mean, this is a public meeting. We checked it over with Joe and with HR. It's not an executive session type meeting. It's a public meeting. This is, this is what we're doing. Or, I mean, there's, I mean, the discussion is open. I mean, there's probably a level that can maybe go executive session, but nobody knows enough about it. We'd probably end up breaking the law and getting ourselves in trouble anyway, so we're just gonna hash it out in the open. There's people here, they wanna hear what's going on, and I don't blame them one bit. I'm just gonna keep repeating what these guys said, even though, you know, it's probably maybe as fruitless, I don't know, hey? You know, when you step in that county equipment, it's a reflection on all of us. Sheriff's Department, Auditor's Office, the Commissioners, everything, you know? And, you know, people make mistakes, and there's, this handbook is sixty pages. I mean, there's, you can, you can go through it, and there's all kinds of stuff that says in here. Some stuff is up for interpretation, I suppose, to a point where you don't ask questions, and that's what happened here. I, I just, I think the part that frustrates me the most is that somehow, like, people seen this, and they think that we're okay with it, too. Like, they think that if one person does this, that that's how the county is, and that is my biggest disappointment. Because the entire time I've been here, if there's one thing I've tried to do is to stop this private work type stuff from going on, these things like that, you know? And, you know, is it the end of the world that this happened? No, but it's just a bad, bad optic on this, that you guys thought this was gonna even be okay at all. I mean, it just, I mean, I mean, and I see you track the hours and stuff. I think your intention was, was, like you said, I agree with, or I shouldn't say I agree, I believe your intention was, you were trying to do the right thing. You were, you were basically hiring yourself like you thought it was okay if the county got hired to do private work, but, I mean, the county doesn't really hire out that private work. It's more for the extenuating small circumstance, where while we're doing our job, there's this small little thing that could be done, and that taxpayer would compensate you for doing that small little thing, whether it's maybe a small call. I mean, and even those situations are up for debate, whether they're right or wrong. So to act like there's even some kind of clear-cut assumption that could be allowed here is just, it's just frustrating. I just, it's frustrating, so, you know, I'm willing to cut Skylar a little bit of slack because he's new, that's fine. I mean, it was a terrible decision, it was terrible. And I told you on the phone when I talked to you about it, it was an awful decision. But David, you know better. I mean, you've worked, county worked a long time. I mean, and just, just really disappointing that, I mean, to even put your road superintendent in that situation, and then to follow up and put us in this situation, too, it's just, I don't know, it is, it's just disappointing completely, so... I know, David, you got anything you wanna add?
Not at this time.
Okay. So I did talk to Pam, our HR consultant, and it's basically, anything is in play. I mean, it's grounds for termination, and, but she also told me that Burnley County's had situations like this in the past, and other counties do, too, and they've handled it differently, too. The one thing that they usually handle it up is, is they do a write-up, which is basically probation, and then, like with this case, you would charge them for the machine time, whatever is agreed upon, too. And then the third thing as a part of it would be a pay restriction, would basically be no raise for, usually they do it here. So that's probably the light end of it. The heavy end of it is termination, and unless there's somewhere in the middle that somebody wants to fall to on it, that's kinda, that's kinda the advice that I was given by somebody who's handled it before, so I guess that's basically where we're at. Don't all speak at once. What do you guys think?
Well, I'll tie what I think. Doesn't mean it's right, but it's what I think. You know, if Dave were twenty-one years old and just starting out on these machines and made an error like that, I'd be more apt to say, you know, "He's young, doesn't really know, but golly, Dave, you've got all that experience behind you, you know, and, you know, they make box scrapers, you can rent them, you can borrow them." When you were just taking that home to do that, it just never dawned on you that, "Man, I know somebody's gonna see this, and it's gonna be hell to pay." I mean, did that, did that dawn on you at all that, "Someone's gonna see me with this machine?"
Yes, it did.
Yeah, it had to have, I mean...
It did. I'll be honest, when I drove in the yard, I worked on it about ten minutes to reset the slide and the whole board. I had this gut feeling, and then it's like, I came back to Skylar, and he said, "I'm okay with it." Like I said, I was longly assumed that it might be, you know, would be permissible. Yeah, I admit it, I own it. It's one of the dumbest things I've ever done. Did I do it absolutely intentionally behind everybody's back? No. But in hindsight, it was, it was stupid. But there was no, there was no malfeasance intended, so to speak. It was just a dumb-ass decision that I was more than willing to pay for. It, you know, it's not, I didn't intentionally go behind Skylar's back and do it. I didn't, I didn't take it out in the hills where nobody could see it, you know? It's like, yeah, I own it. I own it, you guys gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I guess I don't know how far we should go. It's just, it's just the idea that what was done is, it's just such a bad eye for the county. You know, and to go to another county, you know, it just, it don't look good at all.
No.
I mean, I don't know what else you say. It just don't look good at all. And, you know, it's so hard to explain it to people, and rather than Facebook, social media, whatever. I mean, you, it put, it put it out there all over, everybody sees it, knows it. "Oh, what are they gonna, now, how are they gonna handle this? Just gonna let, you know, slap you on the hand and let it go?"
I just, it doesn't matter that it was on Facebook or anything. If I would've just found out about this from you two, I would've been upset. I mean, this is...
I agree.
Just not...
Not right.
It's not, and even if it was the direction of former county commissioners or former counties, it hasn't been the way of this board from, since I've been on here. I mean, we, it's been slowly been knocking it out when we've been finding it from before, from past stuff, so that's probably where the biggest disappointment comes from, is that I thought we were moving past this kind of stuff, and now it seems like it came back. So I will just say one thing. David has been a good employee. I can think of several times where David has saved the county a lot of money. Like when he built the rock bucket for the payloader. I remember, I think it was last spring, this last spring, when it moved in snow, and one of the wings got bent, and that was gonna be like a five-thousand-dollar fix, and he fixed it for a thousand dollars with a piece of metal on his welder, and it looks good as new. I, I've seen a lot of good out of David. He's an excellent blade operator, and he's a damn good snow pusher, and terminating an employee right before winter is probably not the best decision either, so it's just something to realize. It's frustrating right now, and in this moment, it feels like it's just the easiest thing to do right now in the world, but, you know, it's, that's gonna be a tough decision to defend in February if we're sky-high with snow, too, to remember that this is something that's still probably correctable. It's not like it's the total end of the world. It's a policy breach, no doubt about it, but it's, I mean, it's something that's, I mean, I'm a lot more accepting of it today than I was on Thursday afternoon. If we'd be having this meeting a couple of days ago, this meeting would've been over already, but it's, it's just something to keep in mind and remember, too, that as commissioners, that there's still a large group of the county out there that's gonna be suffering this winter if there is no blade operator. It's this decision...
Right.
I mean, that's what you gotta weigh in against, too, though. Just, just food for thought. I'm not condoning anything, I'm not saying that it was no big deal, but what I'm saying is, if you fast-forward to February and it's a horrible winter, are we gonna look back and think this was a big enough decision to go through that kind of misery, too? That's all I'm saying, that's just...
Yeah, I mean, you got a point, but at the same token, what is right is right, you know?
I'm not disagreeing with that, either. Honestly, the reason why I haven't voiced a decision is because I truly haven't made it my mind. It's, I, I don't know if there's a decision, there's no victory in this decision. Because no matter what happens, we're either gonna be too tough or not tough enough. I mean, that's the most frustrating part about this, too, is no matter what we do, we're not gonna come out of this good.
No.
And that's probably, well, I said some things most frustrating, so I keep reiterating it, but this is pretty frustrating. I'm looking at David a lot, too, but Skylar, it's pretty disappointing on that, too. I mean, it just, I mean, like I said, I'll cut you a little slack because you're new to it, you got a lot of other responsibilities, you're learning right now, yeah, but you, if you don't know these things, we always told you before, call somebody. Call a commissioner, you know, call me, call, heck, call the sheriff if you want, if you feel comfortable asking him, and just asking him his opinion. I mean, just go out there on that, that was pretty foolish. It was pretty foolish. So I think, just for the sake of time, so we're not sitting here the entire time, I think, I think with Skylar's situation, I think Skylar should get a written warning put in his file, and basically, because we just gave him a review on his probation, and he, he did fine. There was no issues up to that point. The only reason his probation continued is because he wasn't living in Emmons County, which we all agreed that timing was, that was maybe up to a little bit of other things. So I feel like in this case, Skylar was an employee in good standing, you should get a written warning to his file, and basically, you're on notice if something like this happens again, and you're probably gonna be terminated. But David, I'm not gonna just rule on it, I guess. I think, in my opinion, I think you should pay for the machine time, and probably even a little extra, because I also consider driving from the county to your property and all the different things, too. If you said it was two hours, I'd feel more comfortable with you paying for four, just to make damn sure that it covered every inch of what you did. And then I think that written notice in your file, too, since I don't remember you having any kind of disciplinary action before, so I think that, and then I think, I don't think you should be eligible for a raise for a year, like how it was recommended to me as one of the options from HR. That's my opinion.
I guess...
There's five of us here, so I mean...
I guess I'll voice my opinion. As Dave, I don't think the monetary end of it can make up for what took place. I mean, I know you kept track of it, everything. We can't just pay our way out of stuff anymore nowadays. People see that, you know? Really, now he's gonna pay for that, and it's gonna be okay? You know, and, and if we put you back out on the road, David, and I'm saying this as a friend here, so I mean, people are gonna be on us, then. You know, you guys, really? He can do that and get away with that? What, what's next? You know, so as one commissioner, and nothing personal, I would have to say I would need your resignation. That's just, that's my opinion. We need to, we need to clean this slate, we have to keep this place looking good because it's, the public eye is out there everywhere, and I, and I know it, because it's not going away. So that's my opinion on this case. As far as Skylar, I think there needs to be more discussion, and we're gonna have to put something down, we're gonna have to...
That's fine, I mean, I'm just...
It was just as I said, we're just, we're, right now, we're not entertaining a motion. Yeah, no, right.
We're just discussing things, and it's...
So...
No, I, I agree with Leonard. I mean, Skylar, yeah, I think a writ notice and it put it in his file, and, you know, but, you know, I think as far as David's up, you know, it has to go further.
I would have to say probably not fire him, I'd just, you know, give him a little disciplinary action, whatever, and he'll care to be that way. Well, I'm willing to entertain any motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to ask for David's resignation today.
Chairman Michael's made the motion, ask for David Crumb's resignation. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holm. Any more discussion on the matter? Not hearing any, we'll go to a roll call vote. Madam Auditor, will you call the roll?
Emily?
No.
Olin?
Yes.
Culber?
No.
Magr?
No.
Wyden?
Yes.
Okay, well, motion failed. So we're still here. I guess I think just put him on probation for six months, or...
No, a year.
Okay, put him on for a year.
Put him on a year and no raise for a whole year.
Okay. We're getting that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So you're making the motion that David be placed on probation for one year with basically no raise for a year of pay restriction? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culber. Is there any more discussion on that? I guess I would like to see that motion amended, so that he also pays for the equipment time, too.
Yep.
I'd like that a part of the motion, if that's gonna be the case, because that's, that's gonna happen at least in this.
Can we also add into that that from this point on, and a no blade stays at this place?
Yeah, I, I don't want the blade going out there.
I know, it's a convenience...
I don't think you need that motion. I think that just needs to ha, I mean, that's, I mean, that's just...
I don't want it out there anymore.
I don't think you need that motion, but...
Mr. Chairman, I would like the motion reset.
Right, well, I think the motion right now is for David to be placed on probation for one year with a pay restriction, basically, and it's not eligible for his raise for one year. And is there a motion to amend it to include for him to pay for the equipment hours?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, so you're gonna make a motion to amend that?
Yeah.
So you're gonna amend the motion to also include that David has paid for the equipment hours, and how many hours is gonna be paid for?
Whatever he uses.
So you're saying two hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then, plus fuel and everything else.
Yeah, well, the fuel and everything else, you probably... That was part of that, right, David? Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to make that amendment. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Culber. Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Not hearing any, we'll vote on the amendment, which is to add in two hours of equipment time and the fuel costs on it, which would be a hundred dollars. Marcy, you wanna call the roll on that one?
Emily?
Yes.
Olin?
Yes.
Culber?
Yes.
Magr?
No.
Wyden?
No.
The amendment passes, so now the motion to be voted on is for David Crumb to be placed on probation for one year.
Wait, okay, that amendment was what?
For the... The amendment was for the cost of the equipment.
To pay for two hours of equipment and plus his fuel.
Oh, I thought that was part of the whole thing.
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, that was the, but the amendment, the amendment is, the amendment was for him to pay for the equipment time too, cause that wasn't included in the original motion. So, current motion is for David to be on probation for one year with a pay restriction for one year, and for him to pay for two hours of equipment time, plus a hundred dollars of fuel. Is there any more discussion on that motion? Not hearing any, Madam Auditor, we call the roll.
Everly?
Yes.
Holm?
Yeah.
Culber?
Yeah.
Magr?
No.
Wylden?
No.
So that motion is passed, I'm just gonna explain my reason for the no votes, is I don't think the equipment time was enough. That was part of it, but, um, before we leave this meeting now, since David's on probation for a year, pay restriction for a year. And so we got two hours of equipment time, I believe is two hundred, two hundred hours, that's four hundred, and then a hundred is, so that's a five hundred dollar check you wanted to pay. Skylar, we're gonna probably think about yours or probably revisit it at some point. One thing I will suggest is I think you should rotate David out of his area. I think he should probably go maybe on the other side of the county, cause I think one conflict that we run into are guys that blade in their own areas and it just, this is the kind of situation that probably when it came up, he'd be blading out by cat tail or something like that, so. I think you should shift David's route, you either switch him with another blade operator or however you wanna do it. But I think that definitely should happen too. That really doesn't need to have to inform the motion, it's more of a house cleaning operations type thing, but I think that would just be best suited for that area too, because. It doesn't seem to suit us well to have guys blading in their own areas, obviously, so. I think that's something that needs to happen as well, but. Unless there's any more business.
Go ahead, I got some.
Well, it better be pertaining to this specific item.
Employees.
Yep. Okay.
We have another employee that we had that had his time card, time card, or.
That has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, it's employees.
That's old business, we discussed it already.
We never discussed them.
Yes, we did, it's old business, it's done with.
Don, Don, I think for the sake of this meeting and how everything's going, we're gonna have to talk about that in another meeting, cause that's not really pertaining to this.
Yes, it is, it says employees.
I know, but it's.
You guys, you guys are all talking about how, 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 how it's not fair to, you know, David, not, not fair to the county employees or people out there in the county that are, oh, they're gonna see all this stuff. But what about this here? Well, we got a, an employee that's still there, he had his time card, nineteen thousand dollars worth, it's taxpayers' money, it's not fair to everybody else in the county.
Don, Don, I'm gonna stop you there, because we, you know, that employee you're talking about is on probation and is on a similar.
He's not on probation, he's not on probation.
But he's still on, he's still on his pay restriction for one year, similar to what we did to David as well.
It doesn't matter, that was not about that, that he was on pay restriction because he, he blocked that other guy in, he was not on pay restriction because of this, this thing here.
Well, that's because we considered that matter closed, Don.
What, what matter?
The, the matter of the time cards, we already went over this a number of times.
Why are we covering this up?
We're not covering it up.
Or should we?
We talked about it in the open and we came to the conclusion that there was, I mean, there was circumstantial evidence, there were some things that you could prove and some things you couldn't, and then we.
Then he should have the chance to come in and prove himself.
Well, I think that.
I, I think it's wrong, it's my, it's my money too, taxpayers' money is my money, it's not fair to all the other employees in the county, and it's not fair to the taxpayers. And maybe they should put that in social media.
Well, the county doesn't control itself, but we can't, we can't.
If we're just gonna cover this stuff, this stuff up, just for certain employees, why are we doing that?
Well, we're not covering it up, it was.
Just because Gary's brother works for the county, now we're not working.
What's that got to do with it?
This meeting's falling into disarray, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting, cause this is, this is not, so, meeting.